Danny for our pledge allegiance.
Amen. Good evening, everyone. Thank the city council for this opportunity. Let us bow our heads. Most gracious Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your love. Father, as the city council convenes this evening, heavenly Father, we pray that your spirit of brotherly love will rest, rule, and abide in this place. Heavenly Father, that the work that they do, heavenly Father, will be prosperous, heavenly Father, and it will be the best for the people. Heavenly Father, we pray that you will just look down upon them, whatever their needs may be, that you will bless them, my Lord. It is these things we pray in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Jefferson. Roll call. Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fox?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. At this time, the council will be presenting three proclamations tonight to three outstanding young men. Two of these young men have placed nationally in rodeo sport recently, and the third young man has achieved the highest rank in scouting, that of Eagle Scout. So, we will do that at this time. Is Chief Danny Wiley here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think you told me one time you got on the bull, but it just took one appointment that straightened you right out. I think that's how that went. I want to thank the TRC Board of Trustees, Dr. Wes Payne, and particularly rodeo coach Chad Phipps for their unwavering support of the rodeo team. Let me share some, before I get people's attention, some information about the sanction of intercollegiate rodeo teams. The National Intercollegiate Rodeo Association is headquartered in Walla Walla, Washington, and held the college national finals rodeo in Casper this past June, which was televised nationally by ESPN. There's over 130 member colleges and universities with over 3,500 student rodeo athletes from all over the United States, and it's divided into 11 regions. Three Rivers College is in the Ozark region, which includes Missouri, Tennessee, Alabama, Arkansas, Mississippi, Kentucky, South Carolina, and Michigan. But, when they're competing against the most elite rodeo teams in the nation, from Texas, Oklahoma, Wyoming, California, Kansas, over in Tennessee, and Kentucky even, when they qualify and compete at the national college rodeo finals, to get there is an accomplishment to do what these two young guys done is even more amazing. TRC and Papa Bluff were very well represented by the two young men with us here tonight to receive a proclamation for their outstanding efforts in one of the most dangerous sports in America, the bull riding. And I'm very honored, Mayor, that you let me be involved in this and present this award to these two outstanding student athletes. If we get Cole Skinner and Holden Moss to come up, I'll read those things. I've got that printed out. I'll just read it off of here and go from there. Whereas the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, is always pleased to recognize those individuals who bring credit upon themselves and upon the community. And whereas Cole Skinner finished second in the bull riding to become the reserve national champion at the college national finals rodeo in Casper, Wyoming, whereas Cole Skinner enjoyed much success in his high school rodeo career, including being a four-time high school rodeo association state champion, bull rider, and a finals qualifier in the 2018 National High School Champion Bull Riding Championship Association. Whereas Cole Skinner qualified in the 2020 Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association Southeastern Circuit Bull Riding Finals. And whereas, under the guidance of Coach Chad Phipps on the Three Rivers College rodeo team, Cole Skinner was the 2021 region champion bull rider, 2021 college national finals go-around one winner, and was number two in the nation in college rodeo in 2021. Whereas the city council in the city of Papa Bluff is justly proud of Cole Skinner and feels mandated to celebrate this event by calling upon all citizens of the community to join with members of the city council in expressing their best wishes to Cole Skinner. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Papa Bluff that it now formally expresses its most sincere congratulations to Cole Skinner at this proud moment. Further, the city clerk of Papa Bluff is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this proclamation and to cause it to be delivered to Cole Skinner and to further cause this proclamation to be forever preserved in the official records of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, on this 20th day of September 2021 by the Honorable Steve Davis, Mayor of the city of Papa Bluff. Secondly, whereas the city council of Papa Bluff, Missouri, is always pleased to recognize these individuals who bring credit upon themselves and upon the community. And whereas Holden Moss finished fourth in the bull riding at the college national finals rodeo in Casper, Wyoming, and was the only rider to score in the first two rounds. And whereas Holden Moss enjoyed much success in his high school rodeo career as the 2018 Georgia High School Rodeo Association state champion bull rider. And whereas Holden Moss was the 2018 Southern Rodeo Association champion bull rider and a finals qualifier for the 2019 Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association Southeastern Circuit Bull Riding Finals. Holden Moss was a qualifier for the 2020 International Finals Rodeo and the 2020 International Professional Rodeo Association Rookie of the Year in the bull riding. Whereas under the guidance of Coach Chad Phipps and Three Rivers College rodeo team, Holden Moss was the 2021 Ozark Region Reserve Champion Bull Rider, 2021 college national finals go-around winner two, and was number four in the nation in college rodeo in 2021. And the city council of Papa Bluff is justly proud of Holden Moss and feels mandated to celebrate this event by calling upon all the citizens of the community to join with the members of the city council in expressing their best wishes to Holden Moss. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the city council of Papa Bluff that it now formally expresses its most sincere congratulations to Holden Moss at this proud moment. Further, the city clerk of the city of Papa Bluff is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this proclamation and to cause it to be delivered to Holden Moss and to further cause this proclamation to be forever preserved in the official records of the city of Papa Bluff. Mr. Mayor, if you'll bring those over. And guys, I'm so proud of you. And I'm proud to be able to present this to you and keep up the good work. And I might add one thing. When they're practicing, the bulls don't know the difference between a practice pen and the shine frontier day. So, they've got to be trying all the time.
Okay, we now have, and last but not least, this is a special proclamation recognizing one of our local youth. If you'll stand right here. Law, right?
Yes, sir.
Law Summers. Okay. Whereas the city council of the city Papa Bluff, Missouri, is pleased to recognize individuals who bring credit upon themselves and the community, Law Summers will receive the coveted Eagle Scout Award during a court of honor ceremony to be held in Papa Bluff, Missouri. Law is a member of Boy Scout Troop 4166, of which he has held the positions of quartermaster, assistant senior patrol leader, and patrol leader. Summers has earned this highest achievement in scouting as a result of steadfast commitment that he has so consistently displayed in striving to fulfill all the stringent requirements for the Eagle Scout rank. Law has culminated his Eagle career with the completion of his Eagle project, which consists of collaborating with the veterans of foreign wars to build additional flags to be placed along the main thoroughfares in Papa Bluff, bringing the total number of flags from 175 to 425. Law has enjoyed much success in his scholastic endeavors also, which include being in the honors classes and being a member of the Papa Bluff Mules freshman football team. Law is an active member of the West Side Church of God. The city council of the city of Papa Bluff is justly proud of Law Summers for his dedication and commitment in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Now therefore proclaimed by the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, they now formally express their congratulations to Eagle Scout Law Summers at this proud moment of well-deserved distinction. The city clerk of the city of Papa Bluff is hereby authorized and directed to certify this copy proclamation and deliver it to the Eagle Scout Law Summers and cause it to be preserved in the official city records of Papa Bluff, proclaim this day, the 20th day of September, by myself, Mayor of Papa Bluff, Steve Davis. Thank you.
Troop 4166 just wants to say thank you so much for allowing us to work with you and the utility department. We have had an absolute outpouring of love towards the troop for getting the flags up on the east side and south side. It's been a lot of fun. And Mark Richardson has due as much credit as anybody. He pushed us to put this together, and it was a very successful project. So, thank you, and we really look forward to continuing the program for many more years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Next section, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, we received in our packet all of the items on the consent agenda. And with that being said, I move that we update agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Consent agenda has been accepted. Item nine, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the city council will consider proposed adjustments to the 2021 city budget. Our city manager will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, got a couple of things that we have received as revenues that were not budgeted, that I wanted to formally amend the budget to add these two things. The first one being, as you remember earlier this year, the sale of the library building to the library district for $200,000. And then also, the United States Small Business Administration had a program called the Shuttered Venue Operator Grant Program. This program compared the revenue of the Black River Coliseum for 2020 compared to 2019 and reimbursed the city the revenue that was lost that the Small Business Administration associated with COVID and the pandemic. That amount is $147,396.06 that we have received just within the last couple of weeks. So, just to kind of formally amend our budget to show those two revenues. And also, to ask for an amendment for an unbudgeted expense that would be paid for out of that, some of that revenue that was unbudgeted. The street department has a road grader that is broken down beyond repair. If you've seen, we recently went out to bid for that road grader, got some bids back, and really, they came back cheaper than anticipated. I think Jerry was expecting $225,000-plus dollars. It actually came in at $179,000. We had then gone out and got some quotes back on financing it, too. And with these budget amendments, I would ask that we approve those, if you approve those budget amendments, then we go ahead and purchase that road grader as opposed to try and finance it or anything like that.
So, you just need a motion, right, to move?
Yes, I would ask if you move this to tonight's voting agenda.
I'll make the motion to move it to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Item X, action required items. Item AA, bill number 8336, the city council will take action on an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a proposed small bar in a CX3 Central Area Mixed Use Commercial Zone District. This property is located at 309 South Broadway.
Move for first reading of bill number 8336?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow the sale of liquor by the drink at a proposed small bar and pool hall located at 309 South Broadway in Papa Bluff.
Make a motion.
Motion for second reading of bill 8336?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Counselor?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow the sale of liquor by the drink at a proposed small bar and pool hall location at 309 South Broadway in Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of bill number 8336?
I have a question just before that. Clerk Young, is there a separate license for a pool hall and the liquor by the drink? Is there a different?
The pool hall will be listed as a business.
Okay.
And they will incur those charges, and then the alcohol will be done separately.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's no further questions or comments, roll call. Clerk Young?
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Bill number 8336 has been adopted. Item BV, bill number 8337, the city council will take action on a budget adjustment made to the 2021 city budget.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8337?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of bill number 8337?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor?
An ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of bill number 8337?
Second.
Any further questions, comments? If not, roll call. Clerk Young?
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Bill number 8337 has been adopted. Item CC, resolution number 1958, the city council will take action on a resolution regarding the submission of a grant application with the Missouri Department of Economic Development Community Block Grant concerning a replacement of Ozark Foothills Recycling Center's horizontal baler.
Motion for the reading of resolution 1958?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
A resolution of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, stating intent to seek funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizing the mayor to pursue activities in an attempt to secure funding for a horizontal recycling baler for Ozark Foothills Recycling Center.
Motion for adoption of resolution 1958?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? If not, roll call. Clerk Young?
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Resolution 1958 has been adopted. Item DD, resolution number 1959, the city council will take action on a resolution regarding the submission of a grant application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources relative to a truck motor for the street department.
Motion for reading of resolution 1959?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor?
A resolution of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the city to apply for funding from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Volkswagen Trust Truck Program relative to the acquisition of a truck motor for the Papa Bluff Street Department and authorizing the mayor and city officials to execute all documents related thereto.
Do we have a motion for adoption?
Motion for adoption of resolution 1959?
Second.
All in favor? Or any further questions or comments? If not, roll call. Clerk Young?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Resolution 1959 has been adopted. I believe our city managers, in the case, we will have a closed meeting tonight. So, item EE, the city council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.02, 1.1, 0.2, 0.3, 0.9, 0.11, 0.12, 0.13, and 0.14 RSMO. Roll call.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Do we have a motion to go into closed session after the city manager's report?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as I said last time, I wanted to be a little more thoughtful about, or intentional about my report to you at the end of the evening to highlight some more of the things that are going on in the city and some things that have happened. So, I just want to highlight a few things. Upcoming events, this Saturday, September 25th, is Iron Horse Festival downtown. Also, kind of in conjunction with the Iron Horse Festival is the September Slam, which is a skateboard competition that's held at the skate park downtown. I've had a few people ask, and just to make sure everybody knows, Buff Up the Bluff has been scheduled for October 16th. We'll be taking phone calls from senior citizens the week before that to arrange for a curbside pickup for those city residents over the age of 65. It's been rescheduled a couple, two or three times, but Ron White is going to appear at the Coliseum on September 30th. There's still tickets available if anybody wants to go. Couple events coming up at the Margaret Harwell Art Museum. The 68th Annual Papa Bluff Artists Guild Jury Regional Exhibit is October 3rd. And their fundraiser, the 5th Annual Margaret Harwell Art Museum Fork and Cork is September 23rd. Reach out to Steve Whitworth or any of the members of the friends of the museum and be glad to get you tickets for that event. Kind of something that strikes a chord with me, this weekend, Saturday, September 25th, local Daughters of the American Republic and some more volunteers have organized a Gold Star Families Celebration for those families in Butler County that lost a family member during the Vietnam War. It's, like I said, it's Saturday, September 25th, at the New Home General Baptist Church. We're working with the police and fire departments to actually escort the families out to the church that afternoon. Just some other news, the things going on in town. If you've noticed, if you've driven down Shelby Road, lots of activity going on at the police station. The precast concrete walls that will house the dispatch center have been installed, and this week, they're going to start the interior stud fill work in the building. We did hire a new police officer this week. They'll start, or last week, they'll start September 27th. This person actually comes to us with prior experience, so their training will be a little bit abbreviated than the last one we hired that was fresh out of the academy. We are still actively seeking out two more officers. The Optimist Soccer League kicked off on September 18th with over 750 kids registered for that. It's great. My kids all participated in OSL, and it's always fun to see, especially the little ones when they get out there playing. So, if you got free time, I'm sure any day of the week, you can probably stop by Whitley Park and watch some kids play soccer. Our monthly bulky, monthly bulk trash pickup has really been successful the last few months. You know, they were running three, four, five pickups a month, and they've been averaging over the last few months, 10 to 12 pickups a month. I think that's really helping us get some of the large trash items that probably maybe would have ended up in a ditch or on a roadside somewhere, getting them disposed of properly. This past weekend, September 11th, three members of our fire department, Captain Roy Lane, firefighter Austin Arms, and firefighter Eric Marsh, participated in the 9/11 memorial stair climb in Clayton, Missouri. They raised $1,400 for the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation and Supporting Heroes. If you saw pictures of them, they're doing their stair climbs in full turnout gear with SCBA packs and everything on. So, congratulations to those three guys and raising the money that they did. And finally, after lots of work, the airport is fully operational. All the permanent striping has been put down. We have our final walkthrough with MoDOT scheduled for Thursday of this week. And actually, it just amazes me, the activity that goes on out there. There was one day this last week, Gary said they had four freight planes that come in. Freight planes come in, pick up parts from gates and rigs and straten and other local factories, and when somebody else around the country is in the buying for them. So, we had four of them actually in one day this last week. So, lots of exciting events coming up. Lots of good things have happened in the city in the last few weeks, and just kind of wanted to update you on those happenings. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Emily, thank you. Are there any further questions or input from the council, or any items for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Or adjourn?